Approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Second?
I'll second.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Motion approved, claims and payroll, any questions?
I had a couple and I don't... Bruce, can you clarify on the batteries on your Tahoe again, why we had to get two on your Tahoe? I had a question on why there was two batteries for your Tahoe.
Because it's a system that's set up with two batteries and both batteries were shot.
Remind me what year, that was what the, what year is that? It was when I was on the council the last time, right?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Okay.
So original batteries and steel? As far as you know?
So two batteries cost $335?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the claims and payroll?
I make a motion to approve the claims and payroll.
Second?
I'll second. He can have it.
Julie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries reports, manner... Police chief. Good evening and Happy New Year.
It was kind of...
I said Good evening and Happy New Year.
Good evening, I said it was kind of.
Oh, okay, I got you. I thought maybe that's what you said, but I wasn't sure.
So we're missing the report on the bottom?
I had issues with my computer slash printer and I sent it over once to Courtney. That copy was screwed up, so I sent a second over. She informed me she already made copies, so I didn't go a third time to her.
Do you want to maybe email it to her so she can send it out to us?
I can put it on next month, as far as that goes.
Or just email it to her, that way we have it, so then we can compare it to next month.
Because I'm, got a new printer now, so it should be up and running.
There was another vehicle loose I asked Tyler about, oh, I don't know, three weeks ago. He's in the alley behind the pharmacy, going back by Offerts.
Okay.
The first house, there's a newer Ford or pickup. Been sitting there for probably nine, 10 months with no lights on.
Yeah, I think I talked to him the other day.
Did he?
And I see that he's got a car covered on it now.
Yeah, he's got it covered, so we don't know.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Is somebody going to check that out?
Yeah, next time I see him in town.
There was weeds growing on it last summer.
Next time he's in town, I'll see if I can chase him down.
Be great, thank you. And then the eight civil matters, I was just wondering about the eight civil matters, was that disturbances or what is that?
We, towards the end of the year, we ran into, which you usually do, you run into a lot of situations with HHS, Health and Human Services. We had a few child custody cases through them.
Okay.
That kind of turned.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Excuse me?
It's short this time because it's the beginning of the year.
I did find that interesting, not in your report, but the other day in the Daily News that they're considering a thing and it showed a picture of the one in Lincoln for the shared office place. Oh, you've been planning that for a year.
Yes, and we're no closer to it a year later than we were before, which is really disappointing. And Norfolk is exploring it too, actually, six months ago, they kind of came to me and said, "How far are you in your project?" And I'm like, "Nowhere." So, and Osmond has asked for me to help them write a grant to get one. So it would be nice if we had one. Talking about that building, I think Mike said he would bid it out, but I did get a contact from a Catholic home health base in Pilgrim, Nebraska. They're looking for an office space between here and O'Neill. They targeted Plainview, I'm out of space. Hurgritz is under contract and so is Frederick's Garden. I don't have anywhere else to put them. I'm thinking about that community building, what else is there? It's not really set up to be an office space, but maybe with some remodeling. So it might be nice if we would be willing to invest a little bit fixing that stem wall to see if we can bring that business in here.
Where are we at with that?
We left it to Mike, turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, BC Builders is one I've been waiting to get ahold of. It's the brand new first of the year, so I'm just kind of waiting to hear, I mean, nothing's coming in. I think that's what we said last month. I'd attack this the first of the year. So hopefully we can get some, at least a couple bids to take a look at that stem wall.
How much space do they need to hurt the people from Wayne or wherever they were?
At least three people were there, I need to get more information, but they were just kind of sending out a mission of what do you have available?
Two or three rooms, something they're looking for.
I'm thinking maybe one big room that would house two to three people. I know some of us, some of the business owners have some extra space in their offices, but I'm, I don't know, we need to find something. So we're full, it's a good problem to have, I guess, but it's also a bad problem to have.
What is Watson still, was that sold, was that under contract or?
If the insurance cooperates with the hardware store, we, there's been some talk, there's no concrete plan, that perhaps a good location for the hardware store would be Watson's. Al Raji has finally come down on the price to a more reasonable level, so.
So he still owns it as of now?
Yeah. It was last year like $680,000, when the school was interested in it. Currently it sits at $354. On the DTR, so 30 firms were contacted for our DTR, we have heard back from five. I've taken several personal phone calls on that one, so we should be getting no less than four bids by this Friday. So the DTR committee will sit down and kind of sift through those and pick the one that they would like to work with, not come back before you guys next month. Steering committee for the community building is actually meeting on the 23rd, not the 27th. There's a bit of a date change there. We are targeting the 30th for completion of the IRP program. Bruce, they did tell me they didn't need your attorney's opinion until after the closing, which I thought was a little strange, but that's the way they do it.
Hard to give an opinion and everything is signed and written until everything is signed.
That's kind of what Mike and I thought, that.
It wasn't touching that.
But we're following our lead on that one. The University of Nebraska is very interested in our successes and some of the things that have happened here in Plainview since we went through the ECAP process, so they're coming back to do something they call ripple mapping. This is an evaluation on the town, we'll bring in two or three people that were kind of instrumental in the ECAP process. And they're just going to highlight all of the things that we've gone through and we're going to kind of be their little shining star on the ECAP program as they sell that across the state. And then on the University of Nebraska side as well, on the Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, I've been asked to be a guest speaker for three separate breakout sessions on three different topics, so that should be interesting. Only update really that's happened since this report is, we did get a new University of Nebraska Community Vitality agent for Pierce County. And Jordan Rassason was her name, she was coming from the Center for Rural Affairs. And we were going to work closely together on several initiatives and she turned in a, she turned down the job yesterday. So job is open again. So it's been almost a year that it's been empty, but we'll see what happens. So if you know anyone with a master's degree who would like to do community planning and leadership?
That's the one that Justin had that moved out.
That was Justin Arnold, yeah. They're looking for, for somebody. And then part of my report too, I kind of gave you that, you have this activity snapshot from '17 to '19, just kind of all the things that we've accomplished since I was hired. And then the last two pages were just 2019, just the things that happened in 2019. And then I also outlined the five, six, maybe eight projects that we're going to work on for the coming year. Mike and I sat down with the Norfolk Daily News, they came up and they want to do another insight piece on Plainview that they did last year, so they were given the snapshot report and then the last two pages obviously were for the last year. So they're going to be writing a nice piece about Plainview on that. So, we'll see where the publicity. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Seaford tenant, last month.
Snow, snowing more snow?
Snow removal, ran the cat for a couple hours, done pedal out, so we know that still runs. Got done discharging at the end of the year. A little shop maintenance and we've been putting new irks on water meters, so there's plenty of them. That's about it.
They put up lights and they park, which makes me very happy. They think else? I don't care if anybody else is happier than I am.
Hey Kurt, that manganese reported here, is that just for FYI, I think?
It's, that's not a regulatory deal yet. It's just kind of, I mean, and they said that they were going to come in and sample. I haven't heard nothing from them yet, but also, it's just, I mean.
Watch it.
Yeah, we'll just, I mean, we can sample it, it's like 20 bucks a sample or something, but you know, we should be.
Based on our water vein bottom, what you have up here in the strip, the Brazil area in that manganese, make you feel a little bit better, manganese would be the least of our worries just because the way the geological structure is set up. However, the first time you get brown water, you may sit there, I think we could probably be testing this, maybe not too far away from EPA mandating all states.
EPA could, I don't think Health and Human Services will do it.
I'm glad you brought that up because I talked with him about that, they're having problems in West Point again.
Yeah, they got big problems there.
You don't want to ignore it when the water looks dirty.
Yeah.
Time to flush the mains, or you got manganese?
Any other questions? Thank you.
I'll reserve it for later.
All right, mayor's appointments, tree board, two openings is Larry Peterson and Jason Smith. And I talked to both of them in person and they were both willing to serve another term with your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the tree board.
Second?
I'll second.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Kevin? Park board is Lynn Steck and I spoke with her and she's willing to serve another term with your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Lynn Steck for the park board.
Second?
I'll second.
Tyler?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
And housing board is Bob Burrell and he would like to go off. And I had two interested citizens when Tyler's came aboard the city council and the second person I talked to is Teresa Lerman in the back and she's willing to serve on that board with you.
I'll make a motion to approve Teresa to the housing board.
Second?
Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Now you do realize Teresa, that board meets four times a month for four hour meetings, 12 months a year.
They meet about once or twice a year. Courtney used to be on that board too, so she'll answer any questions. Okay, number six, discussion action special designated liquor licenses for St. Paul's Catholic Church says the Lenten season will be upon us shortly.
I will make a motion to approve the special designated liquor licenses for February 28th, March 13th, and March 27th with alternate dates as March 6th, March 20th, and April 3rd.
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Number seven, discussion action approval of LB-840 recommendation sign grant for Plainview Family Pharmacy in the amount of $967. I actually went in the pharmacy this morning and I said, "Are you coming to the meeting tonight?" She said, "Do I have to?" I said, "I don't think so," but I said, "We'd like to have the..." And she said, "Well, you know, the sign's already up." I said, "Well, we've got to pump here."
Sign looks nice.
It does, it looks very nice.
Don't think we realized there was green paint behind the old one, but when the spray hits, that'll be forever.
I'll make a motion to approve the LB-840 recommendation for the Plainview Pharmacy sign grant.
Second?
I'll second.
Tyler?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Discussion action keynote grants, Plainview Bowling, $850.
We got one person and I know she don't want to represent anybody, do you Taylor? Put you on the spot in that. I'll speak for it, Taylor's one of our bowlers and that, actually just got a brand new ball, going to get a drill ball, right? The bowling club has changed from the Nebraska High School Bowling Federation, which required a licensing upfront, to Lincoln. It has now gone to the Nebraska High School Bowling Coaches Association. And they do it a little bit differently. The youth groups have been bowling, have been bowling every week in a pod style and they bowl against six teams rather than just one team. So every week they're bowling six teams from the northeast Nebraska area, including Wayne, Norfolk Catholic, and several others. They've been actually doing very, very well. Two weeks ago, the boys, we had a pair of boys that bowled 213 each in a game and, you know, set the standard or set the high for the year. And I look for a lot of good things to come out of it. Request is for 850 bucks. The cost is far beyond that because it's actually right around 150 bucks a week and they go for eight weeks. That's just your payment to get into it, but now for all the charges and lineage that DNK and Randy needs, as well as the high school tournament, which will be held, the changeover will be held now in Kings Lane because of northeast Nebraska. So some disappointment because they love to go down to Lincoln, to Sun Valley. The other part is they're happy they don't have to go as far and they can do it in Norfolk. So past keynote grants have helped supplement this. We tried to go to the Ballbackers Association, the Ballbackers group, for whatever reason, I mean, it's no big deal, they decided they didn't want, they didn't want to take it on probably because of funding. That left this group with kind of no place to go. They'd always went to the city in the past. It's a great organization group for the kids and a lot of them that don't necessarily have basketball or wrestling and things of that. Taylor, did you want to say anything? Do you like bowling? Do you like your coach? So since she's the only representative here, I do have it set up, you never like Dave Korth applying, nor myself, because of conflict of interest as a city administrator. But in this case, Joe Beth, they form what they call a Plainview, and it's got an official checkbook, but every year it changes a little bit based upon who's the parents. And every year there's, you know, senior parents that leave. This one is Joe Beth agreed to kind of take the fiscal responsibility with Courtney and get, you know, get her all the receipts and things that she needs to help offset some of the costs. So that would be the request. I went 850 because if you remember last year, I think I went 1,000, you reduced it down to 750. So I asked for 100 more, I think we need just a little bit more than the 750, but that's certainly up to you, but I would like to see that, do the number.
How many years in a row have they applied for a keynote grant?
Every year. And I can tell you, that's one of the reasons with the youth groups, with the council's always been good about it because nobody else will take it on. And they've represented, they've been really good for Plainview and Plainview's always been really good for them. So that's been since 2000, well, since the keynote grants came out. So maybe the first couple of years, I think they did like chopping wood and things like that for fundraisers. And they still are, they're going to do Split the Pot and they're going to, you know, because you see it costs right around 2,000 to even get there. So they'll start doing Split the Pots and fundraising like that, so.
Does the school help them out at all?
Nope. And I'm not.
Have they refused to, or?
No complaint, yeah, how about a silent refusal? Without trying to condemn anyone because I've got wonderful people here that represent the school, but they never have, you know?
You ask though?
Oh, yes.
And they just, no response whatsoever, or?
Things are tight, I mean, things that, they just, no, no response and it goes on year to year. I can go back again to see if Dr. Altwood or the board would give up money, but generally they try to sit there and take care of it. Most of the time the keynote and the fundraising is just enough to cover, so. I'd like to see somebody pick up the ball because they've now brought back bowling as a high school sport and Plainview is very good at it. So I'd like to see somebody, like Ballbackers or the school, but I'm still waiting. We've been pushing it for 15 years to get into the school system as a sanctioned activity. And that hasn't happened either, so.
It's not they've got a sizable budget over there?
Who does?
The school.
I don't know this, I won't agree with them.
But I think if you asked, since it is a school sanction, I mean, they might help you out a little bit now, since it's the school.
I think it would be, or?
I would love it, I would love it.
Didn't they sanction it last year?
What's that?
Didn't the NSA sanction it last year?
No.
When did they sanction it?
They haven't.
So it's not a suspended sport?
It's not, yeah. So you have to decide the precedence because if softball gets sanctioned into the schools, which could be, then you'll have that too. Forward looking.
Yep, you always want to think, and I think now with the Nebraska, at least the High School Bowling Coaches Association, they took it over and I think they would like to see it continue and they will keep trying to make it happen every year for those athletes. But I think the ultimate goal has been, but it's like a broken record. I've been lobbying and pushing for at least 12 of the 15 years for, to get into the high school sports.
Well, I know they're talking about junior high football and a lot of the board members say they want opportunities for kids, so that would be opportunity for kids in my mind.
I could always be glad to go back or if, I'll tell you what, what you want to do is possibly, if you gave approval, go to the school board and then whatever they don't, maybe split the cost, very minimal cost anyway. And that way you wouldn't have as much because keynote is a reimbursement type grant and I know there are some reimbursements right now that we have, but.
So what's our budget on that again?
Eight thousand, $978 and $60.
You didn't give any away last quarter.
Yeah, you haven't given any away for some time. You wanted to keep it, I believe, to a maximum of right around, if you did right around five grand a quarter, you would probably break the bank, but that's kind of your ceiling. And your ceiling on individuals is 1,000, I think.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the keynote grant in the amount of $850.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Hi.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion.
That was it, Taylor, if you want to go, otherwise, like I said, I'll see you tomorrow at 2:00.
Thanks for representing.
Thank you. Number nine, discussion action approval of DED CDBG grant contract.
LOL screwed up last month and sent the wrong thing to me. So I had the northeast Nebraska one on the agenda, which you guys approved, but you didn't have the northeast Nebraska one in your packet. And then he's like, "That's not right paperwork." And I was like, "Oh, that's what you sent me." So we have to formally approve the DED one, which is pretty much the exact same thing. Says the $3,000 consultant fee and it's just.
No, this, the DED one is, you're accepting the $4,000.
Yeah, but it has the $3,000 in that for the consultant fee too.
Right.
So this one just goes to the state and the other one's going through Northeast Nebraska, so just a formality, so you guys.
Technically you approved them, but you did it back, we did it back.
Right, yeah. And I will say, as much as I love LOL, get used to this as we get into our DTR.
The content of this one for tonight is just noteworthy that it does have the various penalties in it, that they recover all the money if they fail on their public purposes analysis. And then they've got a half a dozen different things that might become a concern. Procurement standards, policy on excessive use of force, fair housing representative appointed, identify a language, English, a limited English proficiency officer. The folks that are going to be the administrators have to take care of all this, but we do have to stay on them to make sure they're paying attention to their details.
They do, and I'm, I'm, I'm Decratin, so they've had DTR since 2016 and we just extended it for another year, so we just actually have a meeting today for round three, so I'm very well versed in how this goes.
Yeah, and, and, you know, largely speaking, it's run the checklist and make sure that everything is good, but we do have to kind of keep an eye on that, or they'll take the $43,000 back after it's over, which would be bad.
$43,000 part's not so bad, it's the 500,000 part that's coming next, not so bad.
Yeah, well, that's even scarier, yes.
In the future, so.
Other than that, as far as the agreement goes, it's fine. It's sign here or you don't get to play, like it was last month.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the DED CDBG grant contract.
Second?
I'll second.
Tyler?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries. Number 10, discussion action league model ordinances, ordinance number 954. And this is about once a year, right, or once every other year?
At least. And we can now slow down your efficient meeting since we have 35 pages of legal documents to read through. What I'd rather have in mind, do, if anybody has questions, you can speak up as we go. But Courtney and I at least have a plan that we will pick and choose tonight and then make the big ordinance to pass all those that you want next month. We don't have the big ordinance in hand tonight, but I hate to guess and do it and redo it. Let's go through them kind of quickly and you can see if you want to discard any of these. The first four, do you have their little summary sheet available to you? The league summary sheet? And the content is in the documents, of course, and you can turn pages if you want. But the first four, signatures to put a petition on a ballot, procedures on recall, requirements for sinking funds, setting up the property tax request. We have all four of those in the code book now. They're just slightly wrong now because of the changes of the legislature. We could go through and pick out the sentence that matters, but basically we can't have a city law that's not allowed by the state law. So we need to do this and just catch those updates. So those first four, I think, are pretty automatic and they need to be there.
And I too went through each one of these very carefully with a fine tooth comb. And I agree with Bruce completely, I think especially on the changing of the procedures on the property tax request. I think you, you need to, you cannot go against state statute.
Yeah, you're still going to have to abide by the state rules and you don't want the city stuff to just be wrong.
So these four are no brags.
If you use it for reference, you at least want it to have the accurate law. The business on rabies, we have most of all three of those that they've given you in the code book now, but they're all mixed into one or two. And these have come out as three, so we would actually repeal a couple, I believe, and put these in place. And you notice a couple of them have things that say, "As specified by the department regulations" in that, the chapter six stuff. Actually, I got to turn a page. Animals that have been exposed to rabies shall be handled according to regulations promulgated by the department. And any domestic animal that's bitten anybody will be handled according to regulations promulgated by the department. And those don't even have the definition of who are we talking about here? But then the third one is the big one that'll go in the 200 section and it has all the definitions. Department, district, domestic animals, hybrid animals, owner, rabies authority. So if we put all those in place, you've got up to date rabies law compared to what the state says it's got to be. So those I think are probably also a yes. The next one on removal of intoxicated persons, we've got all that also in the code. It's slightly wrong, they put in a little more protection that essentially adds a sentence that says if the only reason somebody is picked up from public property and taken into custody is that they were drunk, that does not go on their record as charged with a crime, it's just a protective action. They, you know, if they're not doing anything wrong and they're just drunk in public, they can be picked up and taken home and it just doesn't get charged with anything. So that's probably okay, I mean, they, again, passed that at the state level. It won't happen often, but it's not impossible. The one on tobacco and electronic nicotine, of course. Uh, the one on tobacco and electronic nicotine, of course vaping, they've taken two steps here, they changed the legal age from eighteen to nineteen at the state, we have to do that. You know, the feds just passed something that said legal age is twenty-one, you might have seen that in the news, but I take it that's not binding on the states until the states somehow cooperate, something.
Well, and that, that goes to, and I think this is important on this one, too, because people are just absolutely, well, first of all, no one knows what's going on, and that's, that's a bad thing, and they say the attorney general says this is what they do, but this is a Dillon's Rule state, I don't know why, Bruce, um, you know, we cannot just arbitrarily, um, you know, I don't like sitting there and setting up a ordinance that says nineteen that I feel in three months is going to change anyway, because they got to follow the federal tobacco.
I haven't read the federal ordinance, but the attorney general did, and he said it does not force Nebraska to use twenty-one, and they just passed this last year to raise to eighteen, or nineteen, rather. So I think we conform to state law, put this in the city code, the state will fight the battle on whether it's twenty-one or not, and if it has to be, they'll do it again.
What happens, what happens if you don't pass anything?
And they added vaping, well, then, and that becomes a question on some of these also, you know, are you ever going to prosecute this at the city level? It's still the state law, that the law, the rule is nineteen, so if they want to come in and raid some shop and prove that they weren't testing and checking ages, they can still do it, uh, but, but the city law would be wrong, they'd just be prosecuting them on the state law. So I, I really think the thing to do is conform to the state law, make it nineteen, and wait and see what happens with the twenty-one business. And then the other half of it is they're adding vaping to all the same stuff, because they're starting to crack down on that, the same as smoking. And as you all know, that stuff is sold probably in a number of places in Plainview, and if you talk to any kids, it's around, uh, but, uh, still, it should be the rule, that's what the state law says. But that breaks it into two ordinances, so we prep them as two ordinances and probably get rid of one of the old ones. Uh, the next one is lapse into that same thing, the sale and delivery of nicotine products, same, same discussion. Uh, the next one adds to the indecent exposure law, "An issue of breastfeeding in public is not public indecency." Of course, that's probably true anywhere, that's one of those, I really don't see the city of Plainview prosecuting public indecency very often, but if you want it in the code book, we can put it there, that's the discretionary thing, do you think we want to put it in there?
Might as well.
I mean, it's partly a feel-good thing by the campaigners that want young mothers to be able to breastfeed if they want to, and not get scolded for it.
It could become an issue.
Yeah, it could become.
You see, the problem with this, Bob, is that, you know, and I, and I agree, I'm kind of wrong, Bruce decides, you don't necessarily, a model ordinances, we go through these, and you just don't, sometimes do carte blanche, just, just go in and pass everything and never look at them, uh, several of these, it just, it's not necessary to clutter up, um, you know, an ordinance book, if, if you feel like you want to deal with an indecency, but, you know, I'm kind of like Bruce, it's not going to be a factor that's already been somewhat, uh, what do you want to say, legitimized, you know, without having an ordinance already, but if you feel like you need it, it's a reactive measure, I guess.
Well, yeah. That's right, and you could, you know, conceivably, you could still...
It doesn't hurt anything.
If it's, there are public, there are public indecency laws at the state level, somebody could be cited, and that could be turned over to the county attorney, if it was some aggravated enough situation, but, uh, no harm in having it in the Plainview code either.
It's not in there, and something comes up, then what?
Well, if, say, a business kicks somebody out because of that, and it becomes an argument, you know, there's no municipal law against it, but it's still a state law, so they still can't be prosecuted for, for something the state doesn't allow. We don't have a conflicting provision in the city code right now, that's why I say it's kind of optional, we don't have anything that says this is not so, but you just, if you're going to have anything, you want to say what the state law says, I guess I don't see any harm in it. And it, it used to be there was a bit of an economy issue of, well, how many pages of stuff do we want to fool with?
Yeah.
And have to publish three times, but now with this one-page adopt-all format, you don't have to do that, you've got the packet, and we just pass the one-page ordinance when you're done, anyway.
There used to be the theory, too, Bob, that, uh, a conflict of, uh, when you pass these model ordinances over and over again, you get something that is put in there, and if you don't stay on top of it, or have, you know, with the clerk and others, and the attorney, that you've got these ordinances that become obsolete, and, you know, you might have something, and it comes to even, um, waterworks, or public utilities, or things like that, that, you know, didn't really need to be in there.
You don't, you don't want anything seriously wrong.
Right.
Well, that one, I think, is optional, but probably not bad. Then the other one is maybe even more optional, revising provisions relating to gambling, bookmaking, receiving unlawful gambling schemes, betting something over five hundred dollars or more, you know, the state fights that battle so hard with the slot machines and all this stuff, I can't believe that's something we would want to fight at the municipal level. Uh, that would be one to leave out, as far as I'm concerned, if you want to leave one out, uh, but, again, we don't have anything quite like it now, so it's not a conflict, it's not a problem. Do you want to figure to leave that one off, or do you want it in? I mean, it'd make a public statement in the Plainview code, that you can't do this stuff.
What is our code right now on gambling provisions? Do we have, it said we've got a chapter, is it just basically based on Keno nineteen?
Almost nothing, yeah, we allow for, we allow for Keno, and that's all we talk about in Plainview. There's bingo, oh, I take that back, there's bingo.
Bingo, yes.
And there's Keno.
Yes, I forgot about that.
But that's the only gambling we get into, and I don't know, you know, if there was something serious going on, and the state patrol's going to come in and raid somebody for running an illegal betting ring, well, more power to them, but I guess I don't see it as a big problem.
Is there a limit on how much can be bet?
Uh, this thing talks about betting anything over five hundred dollars or more for one person in one day.
So triple is out for the two or three cents?
And you can, you can very well bet, you can very well bet, I better phrase that a different way.
Glass full of pennies.
You could, you could probably assume that there are people in Plainview that do that, but they do it online, and you don't see it, anyway. There's, I think, some significant betting goes on, on lots of sports, I just, in conversation, you hear people talk about, "Man, I lost some money last week," or "I made some money last week," but I don't know that it's something the city wants to get in the business and go after.
You have this just so that you don't get into a lot of people that cause problems? Why do you even have to tell people to be decent about their betting?
Well, the, this law is in force at the state level, you know, it's just that, are we going to investigate and chase it at the municipal level? I think if you find it, you could turn it over to the state, call it good. And it's also complicated and difficult to enforce, so I'd be inclined to leave that one out, if you're, your call.
I mean, there are statutes and laws, the way that Nebraska's set up is to, whatever authority the state has is what we abide by, and whatever the state legislature, in this case, says the municipalities can do, they'll tell you what you're allowed to make for municipal rules, that as long as they don't conflict with state statutes.
Yeah, basically. I mean, you got to remember that the concept is that the city is a creation of the state, and the city can only do what the state says, you know, that's why you cannot conflict with the state law on any of this stuff, but you just, you don't have to actively worry about enforcing it, either. Well, I'd be inclined to leave that one out, and if, open for discussion, if you want any of the others crossed off, or let me know, but otherwise, we make the list all on one ordinance and pass them in a bunch.
I'd say keep them all, except for the gambling one.
I'd agree.
Okay, well, that'll be the plan, I'll make up something for Courtney, and you'll have a copy to see you next month.
Number eleven, discussion action employee health insurance renewal.
Um, the main thing I'm just going to bring to your attention, and there's a couple points that I wanted to make on this, the health insurance benefit, we work with a local broker, with Town and Country, um, we don't work with Lois, we work with Josh Sherrick, and he's been our agent for some time now, he went into, on our request, we had a conversation, and he, he went into negotiation, what they call renegotiation, and he was able to work through the insurance company as well as internally to bring the percentage raise down to one point six nine, which is unheard of. Um, I asked him, what did we do right or wrong, actually, we didn't do it much right, we had everything that was kind of up against us, but because he is a local agent, and because of the, um, ability to work it through, we get a one-time break, and I thought that was nice, he just said, "Please do not look for it next year." Um, I've heard that before, but for the meantime, we're sitting with the status quo, renewals on February one, the insurance policy is exactly identical to the one we had, with the exception of some third-party insurers that need to follow through, we got different employees, different situations that have occurred this last year, so, um, I had Courtney sit down with the conference phone call, and I think Courtney was satisfied with what she heard from Josh, and so our recommendation is to, thankfully, business as usual.
So it's only a one percent increase?
It went from a twenty-five percent increase, which was not budgeted, I budgeted twenty, and this one brought it down to a one point six nine, it was just an effort, and I really do applaud that, so at times, there would be like, Vicki, when we talk, now we had that argument years ago, and that even with the man, there are times that a local agent, um, can do things for you that even if you're comfortable with outside agents, uh, won't do, I have no doubt this would not have occurred with an outside agent, so, um, heads up and kudos to Town and Country for being our agent.
Otherwise, you're satisf, I thought you weren't satisfied with the coverage of your insurance?
There were some things we needed to look into on the coverage, and Josh was able to pick them apart one by one to see where we stood, as long as the HSA plan stays in place, the pharmaceuticals, um, look okay, and the other problem with the pharmaceuticals was not necessarily with the insurance, it was with the provider, and there were some things that needed to change, um, we didn't think it would be as drastic as a new ownership of the pharmacy, but that new ownership has changed a lot, uh, the way we do things. What else was there we had to look at in the insurance? It was, uh, out of pocket, and that stayed the same. And we had a meeting, I mean, Kurt was in on a meeting, we just kind of talked about, um, to be honest, uh, if, I don't know if you're different with your insurances, but no insurance is really making us happy when we have to use it. Now, if somebody says they got this wonderful plan that used to be less than a hundred-dollar deductible and a hundred percent covered every time you went there, they don't exist anymore, you know, so I, I think, based on what we are presented with, we were very happy.
Seeing the rates are, they're obviously good, what you guys pay.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to do the comparison, you would know, several of you would be able to see.
Uh, being self-funded, have we've ever gotten money back? Have they ever?
No.
Oh, really?
No.
Okay.
Well, we haven't, uh, self-funding is for a third party, and I don't think we've ever seen anything, uh, conditions weren't even ripe, I mean, we, not that it was a bad thing, but we had, obviously, a pregnancy, we had a few other, you know, the things that go through, so...
That's what I was curious on.
They kicked in.
Sometimes people get kicked back from being self-funded, so...
Yes, we did talk about that, but we have not been healthy enough to, to do that.
So would you say that because it's only one point six nine, that the three percent wage increase looks a little better?
I would say, based upon, yes, I, I don't want to admit it, I mean, there's no doubt that we were looking at that very hard, as what can we do, and we're able to renegotiate this down, uh, the three percent will cover, obviously, the one point six nine, it's fractions, I mean, we, it might be, you know, one-tenth, you know, so, let's see, you know, basically, it's what we had last year, and, and the premiums will be, and the, will be the same.
Need to approve that, then, or is that just...
It's there, it's there as discussion action, it never hurts, uh, to give Courtney the approval.
Just to make sure.
Go forward, I believe it is.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the employee health insurance renewal.
Second?
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twelve, discussion action bids for community building remodel.
I really don't have any to present tonight.
Do you want to go right into your report, then, or, or not?
No, I actually, if you have any questions on the first part of the report, I really don't want to go into my report at all, but if you have some questions on that first part of the report, and then I'll do my report. Anything in there that you see that was outstanding? I made some suggestions, you see, it was a different format, I gave you a lot of things to lay out, uh, what a typical slow month looks like, there's a lot of things going on, but, um, hopefully you'll take that into consideration. So, um, shit, this is going to be a little tough of my thoughts. First of all, after almost twenty years of living in Plainview and raising my family here, uh, this is one of the most difficult decisions that, that I've ever had to make. Um, I have decided to accept a position as a city manager in Trainer, Iowa. It was always my hope that I could, and I have to read this from the paper, otherwise I won't make it, I was always, my hope, that I could stay in Plainview and retire, but there are many factors that have, uh, led me to this decision. At last night, at about six-thirty, I was officially appointed to the position of city manager, um, and realize city manager and city administrator are two different kind of positions, they're not the same, um, with an unofficial start date of March sixteenth, uh, by my choice. Uh, I told them that I have a contract, and I have some loyalty, uh, that I sit there in an obligation to the people that I really love, and, and I mean that sincerely in Plainview, uh, in any way that I can for the next two months. Following the December tenth meeting, I had received a text from a friend of mine that is in Iowa, that works as a consultant, and said the position was open, this wasn't something that I pursued. I wanted to make it clear to the council that it was not, I was not actively pursuing this at any time, there was only one Skype interview for this whole thing, and they basically said, "You're it, we want you, we want you to come down and, uh, interview for the position." I then went with the blessings of my children and my wife, as they've watched, um, they've watched what's happened here in Plainview the last few months, and it's been a very, very difficult year, some of this didn't have to be this way, but, um, it is, you just don't, this is not something that any town municipality should have to go through. And a lot of this has to do with the transition, the, uh, mayor position, and Darren resigning, and, uh, Brian becoming the mayor, and then the chief of the police, and the litigation, all of these are definitely part of the decision. Even traveling to the community, I was still hesitant, as I still have the deep love for Plainview, I, there's not a thing I wouldn't do for Plainview, I was at every sporting activity, I've been in every community activity, I've played Santa Claus, I've done everything for this town that I can certainly think of, and then some, I was always available to do what I thought was right for the community and make Plainview grow. They needed economic development, I wanted economic development. Every demand that I made to Trainer, Iowa, in the employee conditions, and I gave them a set of twenty, my wife and I were very adamant about this, they didn't hesitate to meet, they gave me everything. Um, after three hours of negotiation, I was simply left with nothing to say. After three hours of negotiation, I was simply left with nothing to say. It would have been too much to give up. They gave everything that we possibly could have hoped for, and then some. I have spoken with Bruce Curtis, our attorney, on doing this correctly, and I have now spoken to the staff, all except for one, and that's your fault that you weren't there.
Mine?
Yeah, because I wanted.
I was in Creighton, we had auditors.
I also spoke with the attorney, uh, from Traynor as well. I do want to do this correctly. I am making a list that will help both Courtney and Kurt within regards to what needs to be done in administration. In addition, in tonight's claims, you paid for my membership for ICMA. I told Courtney this morning in that, please void that. I don't think you owe me, uh, that, and I would certainly, I don't want to do that. I don't want to have this feeling that I did something incorrectly. Traynor did say they would pick up that ICMA membership. Because it is a leap year in 2020, I would propose to make my last day of employment whenever you feel like, but it would be closer to the end of February, into March. March 16th is when I start there, I can go clear to March 16th. 60 days is what I told them I would give. Once again, I really felt that I could see myself growing old and retiring from Plainview. I would have liked to have seen the new community building come to fruition. I would have liked to have seen to watch Plainview grow in many, many areas. I still have family here, and I, for God's sakes, I hope that you treat them well, and, and don't look at this as something that I'm, I just know I have to do. I will leave an official letter, in fact, I have it with me, a resignation with the mayor, to put in the employment file, and I have some other, um, papers that I want to put in, employment, employment files as well. Uh, I think they need to be there for the future, just for you to have, uh, because you can't continue the way it is, the way I'm in right now. Some things just have to change, and I think you know that. This is the year it has to change. You can feel free to talk to me and ask any questions that you might want regarding city business. I'm not leaving anything high and dry. Plainview has... Plainview has always... Plainview has always been good to me and to my family. And it's only in the last few months and even after the last two, few years, that I've started to see a darkness fall upon the community. I can't blame the darkness on any one individual, so don't be sitting there and thinking that I'm blaming anything. What I do know is that Plainview needs to address these issues to bring it back. The small things are what matter. The unlicensed vehicles, the nuisance homes, the shoddy landlords, the dangerous dogs. Fix the small things so that you keep some of those things out, and so that the larger things don't take over. Whether you go with an administrator or go with a very good crew, I'd take my staff here with me anywhere I want to go. And if they say they wanted to go to Traynor, I'd take them, you know? I'm, I'm not doing a Bob Elstam thing, but I mean, I would take them. They're that valuable to me, so. I didn't write any more, I didn't dare. If I do, I will, um, I will not do it well, so. And I am not about to start blubbering now, so. With that, I mean, I have any questions, like I said, I'm not trying to, um, for the next 60 days, you have my undivided attention, you've got street paving to do. You know, if I really want to get down to it now that I don't have those alliances that I want, I, I implore you as a council, get off your butts, pave it. Don't listen to the bullshit that's out there when it comes to the people who sit there and say something about paving. You have an obligation to make the town better. Don't listen to the bullshit on pit bull dogs and that. I'm going to a county that's pit bull free. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but you got dangerous dogs on the, uh, ordinances on the deal, use it, do it. You did the right thing. You don't need to listen to the bullshit that's out there all the time because people think they know more than others. This isn't a trend where you have to buck up against anything. Most of the towns and counties around the United States are still doing it, and you hear about these one or two, that's not true. The vocal minority does not own Plainview. You've got to get the vocal minority in social media away from even thinking about running Plainview. You run it. You're the mayor, you're the council, and I wish I could be part of that, but I'm happy with what's going on. But for God's sakes, you have this town, and the first question they did ask is, am I going? Potawatomi County runs the city of Traynor. So figure out what you want to do. You saw in my recommendations, things that need to be done. You have no choice if you want Plainview to sit there and thrive and grow. You need it for Susan's sake, for economic development. You can't have them going half-cocked and things like that. That's it. That was off, that was off the cuff, and I said I wasn't gonna do that.
Too much more.
Yep.
City attorney?
I don't have anything else. Everybody recognizes we have that dog trial pending next week. We have a number of counts there, recognize evidence is evidence, and we don't have any guarantees of winning the whole thing, but we'll do what we can with what we can prove. It'll resolve itself next week anyway.
What was that date for, Bruce?
I believe it's the 22nd.
I think I have it, but I'm trying to.
I'm gonna be calling witnesses and getting everybody back on track because it was, of course, postponed.
And it's next Wednesday?
Yeah, I think it's the 22nd, it's a Wednesday.
You don't know what time it all?
Uh, early afternoon, 1:30 I'm guessing, but I'll, I'll let everybody know.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then what about our other lawsuit, any?
I have seen no developments from the Work Comp people this month. They're still trading questions and answers, as far as I know.
Counsel comments?
I would just like to thank Mike for all he's done for Plainview. You know, a lot of times people just look at the bad, they think the bad, they make up the bad, but, I, because there's a lot for Plainview. And I hate to see him go, but I talked to him earlier, and I think it's the best decision for him as a person and himself, so thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Bob.
Is there anything new in Hank's house?
Do you want me to answer? Do you want to go down counsel comments?
I was gonna do counsel first.
I just want to say thank you for your years of service. It's been great working with you. I wish you the best for you and your family. You always have to do what's best for you and your family. Hope be, it's sad not to have you here. I appreciate all the support that you've given me personally. This last year, it meant a lot, so, thank you and I wish you the best.
You've got a good staff.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the words you set up there, on what we need to maybe, what to do in the future. I'll take that with me.
I sometimes feel like maybe just I'm not the nicest, the best fit, and I don't want to come, you know, go against the mayor, and then maybe say, the mayor's tough enough, you got a job to do, you know, if there's too much conflict, maybe you can start fresh and, with some fresh ideas. Hank's house, uh, first of all, go back to the hardware house, Hardware 27th, just talked with Kurt today. They're gonna start tearing down the walls with the engineers involved on the combined walls. Hank's is the same way. Um, I just had, you saw a ward out there, I'm having, got, oh, you, you, somebody saw a ward, maybe it wasn't you I talked to, but.
I did.
Bob did, okay.
Not that I was looking out the window.
I didn't mean to confuse you.
I happened to be going home and he was down there.
But there, I, I had him looking at it to see what it would take, and we're gonna go ahead. Kurt's well aware. The reason, probably there's a little hesitation on there, there's a little snafu, nothing ever goes easy because of asbestos. But, uh, we want to get at that as quickly as possible because there's some, um, as you well know, there's some vermin that are now taking over that place, and, uh, it's not pretty.
There's a lot of people traffic.
And I think that the people traffic, hopefully we can, well, I didn't say vermin was all, just animals. But I, I think that, but Kurt's well aware, but we got a bathroom floor in particular that's got linoleum on a concrete. And scraping that is, is gonna be almost next to impossible, but they have told us we can take it all out in one chunk. So we gotta take little chunk here, the siding has to come off, but it is, it's still a goal to sit there, and as we have the time, even the end of January, how about I said before I leave? Would that give you a better?
I just wondered if it was new, that's great.
That's as close as we can get. I mean, it's a, we haven't, no, it's, it's not on a back burner, we've been really attacking it.
Good, thank you.
One more thing, Brian.
Sure, go ahead.
I would like to petition the mayor as we go forward with Mike leaving to involve the entire council.
I was just gonna.
What we do and who we choose or whatever.
You read my mind, I was just gonna ask Mr. Curtis if he thought it'd be appropriate to have a quick executive session to discuss in light of this.
Discuss what?
What are we gonna do? Are we gonna advertise? How are we, you know?
Wouldn't need to be a closed session, would it?
They call him. I don't, I don't see any reason to do an executive session, Brian, if you just, if you want to talk about it. Recognize that the code has in it, because we've gone in and out of this circumstance before, that anything that the administrator would have had to have done or had authority for can be done by the mayor in the absence of the administrator. So until you get somebody else appointed, that's an open possibility, and you still have an administrator until you don't.
Right.
Yeah.
So, uh, in the next 30 to 45 days, it's really not an issue. Uh, you could have a special meeting to have a lengthy discussion of this. It's not on the agenda tonight, so you really
Oh, yeah.
should not engage in too much discussion of how to deal with the city administrator position in general. You would probably all do well to crack open the code book and read the section on city administrator and be up to speed on that, and then, uh, perhaps a special meeting is in order, or, or go with it next month.
If you need to have, I would suggest or advise that a special meeting, uh, if, you know, even though we don't always like that, a special meeting might be necessary to, uh, not only address that, but I also have a zoning, uh, subway's building, a new subway. If you, I mean, I don't have to be, hopefully you already know that just by looking at what they're doing, but the subway building's coming down very rapidly within the next month, you know, and they're gonna put one in due west. But I, I have the board, zoning board meeting with a recommendation tomorrow night, so that would be, and they'd like to get going on the demolition part of it, um, ASAP, so you could combine those two things if you wanted to.
Can we just have the post 24-hour notice in three places?
Or you've got, you know, depending on your timing, you could probably publish something, but yeah. That's a, that's a high-speed, high-speed version if you get it, if you make a decision in a very short period of time. That's probably your best bet.
Have a special, or just put it on the next month's agenda to discuss?
Tomorrow night, I can do.
No, I mean, not tomorrow, yeah, I can.
I'd say special meeting.
I would agree, special meeting.
On a Tuesday, or?
What day works?
I mean, shoot some dates out there.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, everything's.
Everybody can reply. That works pretty neat. If you all get together.
Bruce, does that go for as far as for advertising for the position too, or?
That'd be something that we just.
Well, that'd certainly be something significant to decide. I mean, that's what's always, always been done in the past.
The city mayor to start advertising.
Well, but it's premature until you know what you're offering and what you're doing.
Yeah.
I think have the meeting before you start any advertising. Commonly such things get advertised in the League of Municipalities magazine, and also somehow generally. But, uh, that's what the special meeting before it resolves all that.
Next week, January 21st, or this week, 16th?
This week, I can ask for next Tuesday. Because I know two weeks from now it'd be fireless meeting, right Courtney?
January 21st would work for me. Or if we don't want to decide tonight, we can sure email it out and then decide.
Does that tend to typically work?
That next Tuesday?
Yeah, next Tuesday night.
Mike, it was that, I don't know if you want to go to it, but next Tuesday night, 7 o'clock at the Pierce County Courthouse is the Pierce County Zoning Board to approve the permitting and land right use of, for next year, the solar farm project.
Oh, the solar farm, yeah. It's totally up to you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm here to, like I said, I won't assume that I'm coming to the meeting unless you need. I do have recommendations, uh, for you. You certainly don't have to take them, but, uh.
I would gladly take a risk.
But I, I certainly, I very much, I told you before, appreciate the staff you have, I think there's ways you can use them even better.
Right.
What about the 23rd, Thursday? Thank you, Matt.
I know, I'm involved 23rd too.
This room is booked on the 23rd. Why don't you just send out some dates that work good for you guys?
21st would probably work as long as Susan is there. Are you going to the solar meeting?
Yes, I have to run my support behind the largest solar farm in the nation.
I know you do.
All right.
I was gonna go and join her because I do send my support to you for the solar.
Has there been anything done, like, to advertise help for Kurt, or whatever position that it is that needs to?
Uh, we.
We can put that on the.
We sure can, and we talked about it, and that is a go-forward. Bob even talked about that, there's no doubt. Just keep in mind, and I'm gonna say this, there may, there may be a diamond in the rough, but it, and Kurt and I discussed this. This is nothing I'm saying without his, but, uh, whoever this person is, is gonna have to be more than just a hourly laborer. And I think people forget that. This is a professional position that, um, they may be outside a lot, but, you know, what he does, and we want to get him licensed, it's, it's not gonna be, what we've seen hasn't been very pretty in applications.
So you have that, the word out there that you need help with?
Not officially.
Oh.
Not officially at this point, because I think we're at that mid-winter where we've been kind of, other than solar.
Kurt, I wanted to say thank you, you and your crew for moving the snow very efficiently all the time. You know, Gail thanks you, you know, for everything you guys do up here. I know it's long hours for you.
I just want to make sure next, so can we say next Tuesday at 6:30? And discussion, action, everyone with possible city administrator replacement, part-time help. And what was it, zoning for subway? Does that sound good?
Zoning recommendation.
Zoning recommendation.
Proceed with, um, demolition and subway property.
Could it get in the paper tomorrow? Possibly for tonight?
If you have something officially, yeah. You're certainly gonna write all that down right there, I, I didn't, but, yeah, you could probably get something in the paper.
The agenda's the agenda.
The agenda's, I mean, we posted three places, but just to get it in the paper tomorrow.
Well, but a notice of the meeting would be the question, if you're sure that's gonna be the meeting.
So just a notice meeting.
I just need a little notice of the meeting next Tuesday at 6:30.
It was supposed to be in by noon today?
I'm teasing, I'm only teasing.
Okay, any further discussion or comments?
We just, we had a historical meeting this afternoon, and we're talking about using the library of Lindsay Gillespie owns as possible. It's all very dedicated.
Sure.
But I would like you to consider, um, if there's anything you could do to help with utilities. We really don't have the funding available to us to pay the utilities on all of that. We would not use it very much during the winter, probably only for appointments for genealogy or something like that. We wouldn't have a lot of hours in the winter. But I, at least, you know, maybe with trash, sewer and water that the city still funds. I know that we couldn't do that necessarily with the electricity, but, um, and also the consideration, we don't know what the actual, what's going on with the sign. The sign is on the property, and right now I think they're paying $40 a month for running it. I don't know. I, because that's what we get from the public power to be, like, so.
It's like a football, I'm gonna take it with me.
Put it on.
Well, I thought it was all your baby and your computer that controls.
Put it on next month's agenda.
She controls it back.
As a possibility.
Thank you. Anything else?
And I, I wanted to tell Mike that he can still retire if I do.
Absolutely.
You can come back.
Ten more years or something?
Yeah.
65, 60.
I was going to say, it's probably closer than I think. Kurt's still older than I am.
You have to wait till you're 72 to get anything from your retirement, so you must also keep working.
Ah, just keep working.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Paul and Taylor?
Hi.